The wrong line.
Okay, please turn off all cell phones. Agenda Pompton Lake zoning board of adjustments, May 23rd, 2023. The following is the agenda of the regular meeting of the Pompton Lake zoning board of adjustments. The meeting is to be held in the municipal, um, to be held in the municipal building, 25 Olympic Ave., on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, beginning at 8:00 PM. A written advance notice as required by NJ SA 10704-1 ETZ has been provided of this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, given the time, date, and location, and to the extent known at the time of the meeting, uh, of this meeting, agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken. This meeting will be video recorded and will be broadcast for later viewing for the public. The notice was posted on the bulletin board outside of the offices of the municipal clerk, reserved for this and similar announcements, provided to the suburban trends, the newspaper designated by the council and planning board to receive such notices and to, uh, and filed with the borough clerk. Please stand for budge allegiance.
Budge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in His world, with liberty and justice for all.
Close of office, we have done roll call.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Abate?
Here.
Ms. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Ms. Bernstok?
Here.
Mr. Rowan?
Here.
Mr. Beg?
Here.
Mr. Nook is excused. Mr. Ossiani?
Here.
Mr. Figula?
Here.
Um, Councilman Eric.
Okay, uh, minutes of the regular meeting for April 25th, 2023. Everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes. And anybody have any corrections for those minutes? As I see, there is no corrections. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion. Second.
Okay, we have co-, uh, correspondence, adoption of ordinance, uh, of the Borough of Bloomingdale. Uh, we have two of them. Um, we also had a memo from Liz on ordinance 20, um, 23 dash 16. Anybody have any questions on, uh, those ordinances or statements about?
No.
None? Okay. We're gonna move, we're gonna move on to application BOA, uh, 23 dash 01, Brian Zimmerman. Please go forward. How you doing, sir?
Good, Eric.
Good. Okay, uh, this is a continuation from, uh, last meeting, um, so you're on the road. Uh, just continues. Um, so why don't you, uh, explain to the board, um, the, uh, any changes to the application, if there was any, or, um, just what's going on with your project at this point?
Um, so just some of the changes that we did, we obviously corrected the measurements. The measurement that is now on the house to the left side where the front variance is on page three, it's six feet on the front. Obviously, that tape is back in the back part of that, that's 7.17. We made the correction on the, the rear setback, now at 35.4, which is obviously also covered on the survey. Then also, we obviously went through the application process and also did the rear variance, uh, with the building department, so that procedure was done.
So you did the what now?
Was that?
Will we expose the question or statement about the rear?
So we spoke about the rear variance last time. I spoke with the building department, we added the rear variance, so there's also, there's now two different variances, one for the left side and then the rear variance.
We have that, um, okay, very good.
Yeah, they asked the side, now they're.
Including the back.
Okay, cool. So the side was amended, um, I know there was the conversation about the sopit, as you can see from the frontal view of it, the sopit was eliminated. Um, the only thing that is there is the front shutter, that is going to be completely gone, is that extra on the side.
I also, um, we're all possession of the letter that you had written to the board.
Yes.
So, um, you need to look through this whole letter. Should you read it or should you just?
I think it's because, you should read it or summarize it because it's, it's gonna be part of the public record, the public cast.
Okay. So, um, what I was asking, Andy, is our, um, the, the letter that you had submitted, um, and on the April 27th, um, either summarize it or maybe just read it aloud for the public's knowledge, um, so why don't you go ahead and do that?
Yeah, whatever's easier for you.
Why don't you go ahead and read it? We, just read it if you would.
So the letter, uh, you guys wrote off a copy, I gave it to the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so during the course of the meeting held April 23rd, 2023, the board raised concerns with the structure of the size and the size of the rear setback. After the meeting, I spoke with the building department, I understand the requirement of the rear variance needed for the rear of the garage being 10 to 40 foot rear setback. As for the side setback, I spoke with my architect in regards to these matters, and we're currently working on plans to resolve these concerns. Our main concerns are working on this to eliminate the sopit on the variance side, which is the left side of the house, and also, uh, to bring the wall in somewhat, which we changed to the six feet. Uh, but to bring the wall, this will also allow for increased area, uh, aside the setback. I'm writing this request to follow up to information regarding the hardship requirements needed for the variance. As I spoke about in the meeting, I'm looking to take my current one car garage and largest to a two car garage and gain additional depth. Requesting variance to be granted for a large number of reasons to start. I purchased my home in 2018 as a bank sale, which the house ended vacant, uh, ended disarray for over five years. As I'm looking to do renovations to my residence, not only for myself, but also create a cleaner looking house, which will provide positive appearance to the neighborhood, these renovations will also raise the values of my surrounding neighbors. When looking at my property layout, my current house placement, the space on the right side of my residence would accommodate the size of the renovation without any setback issues. While it may fit due to the size of the renovation, this creates a loss of a bedroom in my current house, along with a large amount of incurred costs. Within these costs would be completely a new driveway, opening a road to add a new entry for the driveway, cutting down two large beautiful trees located in my front yard, and relocating of the electrical service. This would also cause a number of windows to be closed in on that side, reducing the amount of daylight to the bedrooms as well as the basement. A large amount of my backyard would be lost due to the placement on the right side. I spend a large amount of my time in my backyard with my family, friends, and by losing that area will inhibit me from hosting these type of gatherings in the future. Placing this renovation on the right side of my residence would also cause me to have to close in my existing garage, remove all the driveway, just to move it to the other side of my property. Due to a large amount of issues and incurred costs to place the renovation on the other side, the right side of my residence, I don't see this as a feasible option. The placement on the garage in the current size is ideal because it maintains property aesthetics and does not break up the yard. In addition, it's in the, in the places that are seldomly used and currently due to the size of possible use of this property. With the completion of this renovation, it will allow me to complete the renovation and personally own a 1954 pickup truck and also store these vehicles inside. Also, along with that vehicle, enhanced space will allow me to place my 17 foot basketball within the garage and other items stored outside due to lack of storage space. Not only would this renovation allow for these items to be stored inside, but this will also clean up the appearance of the outside of my residence. This will provide additional security for my items being stored in the garage. These two items have also lacked attention over the last few years due to not being able to work on these vehicles in climate weather or outside. Also, this renovation will allow me to spend more time completing hobbies and tasks that I enjoy. The addition, the additional space for renovations will give me the proper area and storage needed for my woodworking hobbies, which I take great pride. Again, due to minimal area I currently have, I need to leave multiple items outside and currently working inside the garage. Due to these, due to the need to leave the items outside, I cannot complete any projects when there's climate weather, potentially through winter months. In regards to other tasks, I enjoy working on cars with my father. For example, we're in the process of restoring the 1954 truck, but due to the vehicle not fitting in the current garage, this restoration is currently not complete. With the renovation of the proper size of the garage and the work area, these projects could be completed. This proposed project would be an improvement to the neighborhood and result in an overall increase of the property value and tax base created by approval. Also, with the approval of this project, I'll be able to store and will have storage and work area and also space needs to clean up the appearance of my residence.
Thank you. Okay, um, what I'd like to do is open it up to the board and ask any, any questions of the applicant regarding the changes that were made to the application, um, and also any questions that they may have for the applicant.
Uh, Mr. Zimmerman, last month, your next door neighbor would be most, uh, affected by your additions not here. Are they here today?
No.
So apparently, there's no issue with them.
No, I've spoke to, um, multiple times, he has no issue.
Okay.
Once he released, received my letter, I spoke to him in detail, obviously explained it all to him, he said he had no problem or any issues.
Very good, thank you.
Right, the only question I have is, uh, you said you put in a fire resistant material applied to it during construction. Do you still plan on doing that?
So I spoke with the building department, obviously I have no issues with that, within the building code, um, but to my knowledge, anything within five feet, you need the, uh, that material, but if it's outside the five feet, you wouldn't need it.
Okay.
Whatever the building department or code says, I'm, I'll follow.
Okay.
Brian, I think the problem I'm having is in respect to all that you want to accomplish, I'm having a hard time understanding, um, why you couldn't have done that with still maintaining 10 feet on the side, because, um, in terms of what we kind of were talking about was that it would be less impact if you had gone further back, um, and the rear setback would not be an issue, as, as this I see is really, um, a challenge.
Well, if I lose the, the width wise, that would lose me from going to a two to a one car garage, and then I would have the, the depth, is that what you're saying?
Um, I, I'm not exactly sure of the exact width that you have here in terms of total. Do you have that?
Yeah, it should be on page three, 22 feet ten inches is the size of the area where the two garages go. Cause that left side property line is very, it's obviously not an angle, but it's not an extreme angle, so if I push it back even, if I were to push it back further and further, because the garage is 34 feet deep, and at the front, I'm at six feet, and the back, I'm at 7.17, so if I'm 34 feet, I'm only gaining just about a foot, so the angle's not there.
Yeah, but from what you've described, I mean, if it was narrower and deeper, um, I know that it's maybe not as convenient for you, but, um, it's certainly a basketball is only, what, five feet wide, eight, six feet wide?
Uh, the trailer's probably about between six and seven.
And, um, I'm sure, I've seen plenty of car, you know, homes with a one and a half car garage, which is, you know, something, but if you had, th- this area is, um, all gonna be garage, is that correct? It's, um, 23 feet by how, 34 feet?
So it's 34 feet deep, it's 22 feet wide, and then obviously, the small area between the garage and the house is like a parry's white entryway, the mudroom. I have some of these too, I don't know if it passes out. So these are all pictures from the.
You identify them before you do it, and then you're gonna have to mark one. I don't think you get any exhibits, so it would be A1 if you have pictures.
On your viewer.
Write on it, A1, and then explain what you're gonna be handing out.
So this is pictures of, uh.
What issues?
I think it's about six or seven houses that are mostly across the street on this, on the same street, which obviously showing that these garages and houses are, uh, some of them, I mean, obviously I can't get exactly measuring their property, but, um, some of these maybe have an 18 inch gate between the garage and the property line, so.
Just give the A1 to Carm, and then pass the rest to the members.
Colored one.
Thank you.
I have the one in color, if it's one we pass out and around, it's a little easier to see. So if I were to reference them? So most of these houses are, the 168 directly is directly across the street from my house? Yeah. And then as the pack of those are mostly kind of to the right of the street?
Sure.
Uh, and it's just showing that it's not abnormal for the house to be significantly closer than I am, though, to be on that street. Yep. So on your whole road, all the house, all the houses are, are within less, looks, based off of this, obviously looking at, than less than 10 feet? Mostly on the opposite side of me is significantly closer on my side, um, most of them, a car can't pass the house, the driveway. My neighbor directly to my left, his driveway goes all the way to his backyard, so from his house to my property line is just about 10, is roughly 10 feet or further, and then from my current garage to, um, on this point to there, obviously be six, so from this garage to his house would be 16 feet. Some of those houses across the street, if they have a gate, is very small, um, and some of them, I think, one of them has a, a bush where you can, might even get between you two. Some of those houses also have, I know it's hard to see in the black and white, they have a exit door with patio step, which is pretty much touching the fence, which is practically touching the garage of the other house.
That's all of the exits, the A1s passing around.
Yeah.
Just while they're looking at it, right, and you just plan on leaving it still unfinished above the garage?
Yeah, at this point, just the cost and everything, I'm gonna curve this, at this point, I don't know.
At some point, you want to finish it though?
Yeah, and then obviously, other than the building department.
Finish it at some point.
Just giving everyone an opportunity to view the, uh.
Now, if you could just refresh my memory, on the original side setback, what was it originally?
Originally, it was 4.8.
It was 4.83, and you increased it to six foot and 7.1.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, one of the concerns was the house being too close for fire purposes, correct? Uh, that was one of the major concerns, but, well, it's less, it's not five feet was where the variance was, where he would need a firewall, so he's past that buffer zone of five feet, which is what we were concerned at, is we're not requiring him to have the firewall.
Well, what we're concerned about is the ordinance is saying 10 foot, and he's underneath the 10 foot, uh, ordinance. And I ask why we're here, but also to make sure that, you know, is he presenting enough of a case to warrant us to grant the variance?
Copy.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I'll take that back. He, he has comments. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Any statements? We're all good?
Uh, my question was about the houses across the street, uh, being so close, had that been a previous condition, previous to the new zoning, or had they received variances at some point themselves, or?
At this point, we wouldn't know that.
We wouldn't know that, but that is, that's typically not something that the board, that the board should be concerned with, because it is what it is. And so the question, it, it's non-conforming whether or not it was grandfathered, they got the variance, but if you believe the testimony in the pictures, then what he's establishing is that in fact, that neighborhood is built up that way. So if everybody else had 10 foot setbacks, this would be a lot different. He's putting in testimony that it would not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, because in point of fact, it really is like that. Everybody, thank you. It'd be nice if they knew, but it's not, or we're probably.
Right.
Just to my knowledge, the only one that either pulled variance, it's the last one on the street that pulled permits is, I think, I wanna say 20, which is the house in Anthe, which actually a bank owned house that was gutted and never completed, empty for like 10 years, and they just recently finished that probably two or three years ago.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay, so what I would like to do at this point is to open up to the public to any questions regarding the testimony that the applicant has provided, um, anybody from the public sector come up and have any kind of conversation? Answer is no, so we will close that public session. Um, so at this point, would, uh, somebody on the board would like to make an, um, a nomination?
If you would like to make a voice, something?
If you would like.
Okay, well, I think Mr. Zimmerman, uh, stated his case very well. We have the municipal land use law versus his private property rights. His house will be an improvement to the neighborhood, and it will produce more tax dollars. So, can I say that I'm in favor of it?
So what you need to do at this point, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance, Mr. Zimmerman.
So these are the two variances as amended, six feet on the side and 35 change in the back, correct?
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Abate?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Curran.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Ms. Bernstok?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Mr. Ossiani?
Yes.
Eric Figula?
Yes. The average variance is, is approved next month, there'll be a written resolution that will be memorialized, and that will be published in the paper. And technically, the, the members of the public would have 45 days after that publication of that to, to court and challenge and check code out. You can make your own judgment about whether the members of the public there are going to challenge anything. Um, so typically, you're completely, have no risk at the end of those 45 days. If you go to the building department, often you can sign a waiver and say, I understand that the court may overturn my variance, and I'll have to carry it from down when I build. Um, so you can go sign a waiver, and you can make your permits, uh, after it's been published.
So it's 45 days until it's published?
Yeah, so it'll be next month, a month from now, they'll vote on it, I assume they'll pass it, they'll adopt the best one, that's three days after that it's published, 45 days after that, you, everything is, you know, it's set in stone at that point, but you can waive, you can waive, uh, you can sign a waiver, and you can get your permits early.
All right?
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Okay, we are gonna go on to, uh, BOA 23 dash 202. Tobias Colwell? Can you come on up, please?
I can swear, I can swear you both in, you both raise your right hands. Uh, state your name, left and right, if you say your last name, that's all right. Uh, state your name and spell your last, please.
Laura Colwell, K-O-W-A-L.
Tobias Colwell, K-O-W-A-L.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and give a statement before this court? Give a statement, hope people can help us, we'll fix it out, we got it. Have a seat.
Welcome.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. Okay, so why don't you, uh, tell us about your project?
Sure, so, uh, I think the brief reason we're actually here is for family. Um, we're born and raised Pompton Lakes, love it here, um, and what we are trying to do is build a little bit of a bigger home for our family. Uh, what we plan on doing, because we haven't renovated in about 25 years, um, we're looking to essentially put a two foot cantilever on, uh, both sides, so it'd be four feet total, um, so we could have a couple more little guys running around. That's pretty much the gist of it, um, that's what we're looking to do. We wanna stay in Pompton Lakes, and this is the best way for us to do it, so I think that's why we're here.
So we're not gonna be changing the footprint of the house, we're just going up on the second floor with the cantilever, um, but because of the zoning is 30 feet from the road, we'll still be inside of that by a couple feet, so, just down here.
Okay, okay, so looking at your, your plans that you provided, um, on the left side of the house, you have a side setback, is that six, eight, eight feet, seven inches, or six feet, eight inches, seven inches?
Um, it's 8.8 according to the survey.
8.8, yes, okay. And on the right, you have a 12.3, and then the front, you have, um, 27.6, is that correct?
Yes.
So basically, what you have is a, a non-conforming house as it is, as it is.
I said, yeah, we were coming anyway.
So you were coming in as, as, uh, uh, you, since you are adding on, you have to come to the zoning board in order to have that happen. And like you said, you are not changing the footprint, you are just going up.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the aesthetics of the house, by coming out an additional couple of feet, how does that line up with the houses that are on the front, uh, on the street as, as they stand right now?
They'll be pretty much even, uh, we had, just like when you guys came out for the visit, you'll kind of see it, there's a house two over that's slightly bigger, that should be taller than us, but our goal is to not extend out and look ridiculous, our goal is to conform like everybody else on the street. Um, we like to be normal, so it should, uh, should blend right in.
There's a couple other houses that have porches on their street, but we're going for a relatively small area to take it out, so.
Okay.
I did come outside, I did take a look, uh, and like you said, that two houses down to your left, it's very similar to what you're looking to do, um, and so I have no other questions on the applicant. Anybody else on the board have any questions to the applicant?
No, I also went over and looked, and there's duplicate just to the left.
Yep. Any questions from anyone else? Guys, anything?
No.
Okay. Like to open it up to the public to, uh, comment on the testimony of the applicants, um, if you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted a clarification from the board, uh, for the record, my name is Eric Delain, Councilman Pompton Lakes, um, this house exists in the R5 zone, is that correct? According to the letter of denial from the zoning officer. And, Mr. Delain, I have actually a question for you, it's really important for the board to indication, um, according to, uh, section 190, attachment one, which is the table of bulk standards for zoning, the 20 yard, the required 20 yard setback in the R5 zone is 25 feet, not 30 feet, as ruled by the zoning officer, they should act, not actually be forced to keep in front of the fence. They should be expect, or extension of the non-conforming conditions to side yard setback, but they don't need to get a 20 yard setback according to our table.
Thank you.
If it was R4, what would it have to be?
Right.
Basically, you said your job just got easier.
Yes, got a whole lot easier.
The short version, your job got easier. Those are mistakes, there's, there was a belief that the, the, belief that the section you were in, you had to be 30 feet back, but in fact, you only have to be 25 feet. So, and you are.
I just wanna make sure my.
I'm sorry, so, yeah, it actually.
I just wanna make sure my.
Yeah, there's a, one of the, the documents says you're in the R5, according to.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes.
Ms. Brinstock?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Bae?
Yes.
Mr. Luciani?
Yes.
Mr. Figi, oh, Mr., oh my God, Mr. Figi.
Yes.
We have to pull up on the display.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Figula.
Same thing, so the guy's usually memorialized, published, and then in the paper, 45 days later, you're free and clear, you don't sign a waiver, you can go, probably get your permits before that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Great project.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, we'll see you Sunday at the parade.
Yeah, you will. We got a nice throw right there. We're on internet as well.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay. We have no resolutions. New unfinished business, normally I could do this, so we have none there. Public discussion, anybody from the public that could come up? Press the board. See none? I'm gonna get there.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on twice in a row.
It's okay, it's okay. At this time, we normally look to Jared to give us updates on open space, so Mr. Jared?
All right. So we're still in the same situation with the Willfield project. It looks like it's gonna go through, waiting on the actual final permit. We did receive another grant for $70,000, I believe, to help with the cost.
Awesome.
So Willfield looks like it's moving along. Hirschfield Park, Phase 1 should be starting shortly, we're gonna do the bathrooms and storage shed. And then they're waiting for the county, I believe, to do the footbridge that goes across, so that's taking some time out to make the county, that, yeah, not be the county.
Now, with the footbridge, I know that there's a summer camp down there, so that's not gonna interfere with that whole, right?
No, they spoke about that, will not interfere with the summer camp. I know that's a big part of...
The camp is huge.
Yes.
Will that be closed, or just resurfaced?
I don't think they're gonna do the bridge while the camp's going, running camp, and the camp's over, then they'll go with it. Or then they have to do, they have to do the footbridge first before they do anything else down there. It's gonna take heavy machinery to fix it, you bring it down there, and if you do the roadway down there newly, and put the heavy machinery down, you destroy what you just put up, so they have to do the bridge first before they can move along with, you know, the next thing. We talked about putting electricity down at the baseball, high school baseball field down at Hirschfield. Right now, they're running a 50-foot extension cord from the field and running it around for electricity, so they're looking to add electricity down to the baseball field. We also talked about creating a surround, a PA system for the entire, all of Hirschfield Park. So for the tennis courts, have a new PA system from, we do like the Easter egg stuff and all the stuff we do down there. Putting a PA system on the football field, PA system down at the baseball field, so when the kids are back down there playing, but in a swimming hole, get some sound down there so that they can hear, because when they call the kids, they come in, you can't hear anything, because this system's not large enough. And then have one central spot where they, you could take a wireless, you know, microphone to take the PA system wherever we go. So that's what's moving along with Hirsch, with Hirschfield. Carlo Field, we're wait, we had to go back to the engineer to get a new setup to lower the deck on the press box, because we couldn't get a ladder that was 13 feet to go all the way up, straight up. So we dropped it down, but now we needed an elevation certificate. We're still waiting on the elevation certificate. Once we get the elevation certificate, then we gotta go back to the engineer. So it's just due process of, you know, getting this piece of paperwork to move to the next phase and move to the next phase. And that's what we have on Carlo Field. Other than that, we have memorialization for Lakeside Park. Will be coming up soon, they're gonna do ribbon cutting at Hirschfield Park. And that's pretty much everything for Open Space.
Okay.
So that's what's covered down there?
Yes, yes, it covers for ribbon cutting.
Yeah, so that...
Mike, you had asked, are they gonna replace the bridge or fix the bridge?
I asked if it was gonna be knocked down or just resurfaced.
So they're gonna redo the entire bridge.
So that's gonna be out of commission?
Yes.
Because I ride my bicycle through here every day.
I know.
Unless you can tread water on here. They're not gonna close the park while they do that, are they?
What's that?
They're not gonna have to close the park?
No, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, I didn't, that was a...
They'll take into consideration, there are three, four sports that use the park.
Yes, I know.
It would be...
It's definitely something that...
It would be a disaster.
But I wouldn't know if they're, they're gonna do it from where Maron Park side is?
On the other side.
Do the work on that side?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's the roadway down there.
Right.
I'll get more details for you guys on that though. No set time was on the X, I know the whole, that's being done by the county. So that's not, that's count, if the waterways, obviously, the county or whatnot, so that's a...
Do they give a timeframe, how long it would take to tear it down and throw it in and in?
You know, I don't know.
I don't know, they tore down...
Major, major bar, yeah, right, ride the bike, it cuts off. Yeah, that's a bridge that cuts off, you know, maybe they'll put a temporary bridge or something.
They're gonna take out those bars at the entrance on H1, so you can ride the bike.
My guess, my guess, my guess is probably gonna be a prefab bridge, which is what they did for Peckman River, when the county did Peckman River Bridge. The bridge comes in basically at the length they need it. Might take a little bit more to remove it, but when they bring it in, to bring it in, they just drop it in place, cement, the puddings, and go from there.
My guess is...
If they do it like...
Like a modular home.
If they do it like, yeah, exactly, if they do it like Peckman River, and really, you shouldn't be on the...
Actually, it's still cut through the park, it's been schooled.
And somebody should ask, though, just...
Well, yeah.
And if it goes...
The people on the south, the garden section also use that bridge, the kids go down that road across to go to school.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they don't have to go on the hamburger turnpike.
Yeah.
It's just, I know that we, as a town, would consider it. I'm hoping that the county would be aware of the fact that it's not just a bridge in the middle of a park that they could...
Yeah.
Right. And when they took the bridge out that goes between Rivendell and Poplin Lakes and just came in and dropped it down, it was gone for a long, long time. It was not, you know, a three-day job.
Yeah. And it's a shame, that bridge needs to be done.
Oh, yeah, there's no question, you're right.
It's gotta be done.
Scary.
So it's become a dangerous liability.
Agreed.
What about if there's flooding? How will this new bridge pulls up?
I'm sure it'll have to fit under the specs of, you know, whatever the regulations are, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not expanding it, because they might have to go through a different flood hazard permitting and things like that, so it's the same bridge in place. I mean, they're mindful of the fact that, you know, flooding occurs in that area, so bridges get replaced, so.
Do you have any idea how high it'll be above the river?
No, it'll probably be the same, same distance.
I don't think it'd be in the same footprint.
Yeah.
Yeah. So good stuff coming through at Open Space. Open Space does a lot of good stuff, it's a great committee to do a lot of good things for the town, and, you know, it's great, Open Space does a lot.
Good. Awesome, thanks for that report. Anybody else for a public session? No? I will close that. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
How's it down?
Coming from the area of stores, I just appreciate your support.